Um, obviously that link isn't out there yet. I do have it if anybody wants to send it to somebody to watch to see if we're doing okay, if it looks good.
I don't have anybody to be able to set and watch right now.
Chuck is watching to make sure that-
I'm not doing anything. I can watch right now. I can watch myself record you guys.
There you go.
Yeah.
Chuck is watching.
Okay, Chuck's on?
Making sure I do my work correctly, you know?
This is a, this is a test.
Well, it could be a good test. One of the things we need to add to the agenda then is Cole Ivan sometime.
Um, did you guys get the, we haven't opened yet, so, did you get the emails this morning from Ivan? You have a new email from Ivan if you have not gotten it.
I haven't looked at, um, I haven't, did you look at?
Yeah.
Hey, we don't have any closed session leading minutes to read or... Only a page and a half of minutes to read this time.
Okay. Jim is standing up here as presented. Let's go ahead and open up the meeting.
Let me just sniff it. Alright, here we go live. Henry County Commission, Henry County, Missouri, Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, seventh day of the April term. The Henry County Commission met pursuant to adjournment at the courthouse in Clayton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, Mark Larson, North District Commissioner Jake Bradley, South District Commissioner Kelly Merritt, Henry County Clerk. At nine oh three AM, Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The agenda was approved as presented. The minutes from the Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting were read. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried. The minutes from the closed session Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the closed minutes, but Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. The minutes from the township meeting Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. Expenditures for the following departments were approved to be paid. Jury pay, buildings and grounds, law enforcement, GR, April election, road and bridge, circuit clerk, inmate security. Commissioners signed the assessors reimbursement for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. Commissioners reviewed a solution proposal from AA Mechanical Contracts in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred dollars to relocate the emergency power generator from current location to new location at the courthouse. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to accept the proposal. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes. At nine twenty-three AM, Aaron Ryder, MoDOT Bridge Inspector, attended the meeting. Aaron presented the commission with the twenty twenty-five bridge inspection report as well as pictures of the bridges. No bridges were closed due to critical findings at this time. Twenty-six seven oh three on Northwest four hundred Road Bridge is closed and is being replaced. Bridge number two A O O one three on Southwest two fifty Road has been closed since twenty twenty-two. He said that bridge will show up for four or five years before it's removed as that bridge is going to be closed currently. Aaron continued to explain the rating system on what the bridges within the county were rated at. There was a lot of discussion on the various bridges that needed attention and how the county intends to address the issues. Aaron shared that Henry County was doing a great job of keeping up with the bridges. Greg Smith was in to visit about Southwest one hundred Road in Davis Township. Dennis shared that they are going to be putting guard rail on it and hiring to it. Dennis Bellers Road and Bridge Supervisor shared that he has been asking township road districts to let him know when they close a road. It is really important that they notify him as this is going to become a SEMA situation. Dennis is concerned about his budget and saying that he will be keeping track of all the expenses to recoup some of the money. Dennis is concerned that he is hearing from some townships that they will not put up barriers when roads are closed due to high water. Dennis is concerned that some of the boards are not taking this serious enough. Discussion was had regarding setting up an email address for township, cities, road boards, and any entities that needed to send information regarding stored damage directly to Mark Harden, Emergency Management Director. Commissioner Bradley shared that Dylan Roder with the Army Corps of Engineers contacted him to see where the county was at with signing the MOU agreement. Jake had shared with Dylan that at this time the county was not willing to sign the agreement. Dylan shared that he would like to readdress the MOU with the commission. Jake said that he would get ahold of Dylan and have him come in and talk about it again. Discussion was had regarding county roads, what determines a county road, who actually owns the roads, and how to turn a private road into a public road. County Clerk Merritt shared that Davis Township had reached out to her to inform her that they had responded to Charlie Kidware's Sunshine request with a cost breakdown for the documents requested. They never got payment for the request, therefore they didn't fill it. At eleven sixteen AM, Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes.
Make the motion accept the minutes.
I'll say it.
Motion made, accepted, accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay.
Just the wee little stack of bills today. I was up here working on cameras this morning. And, um, we did have a couple individuals come in. I just told them that you weren't meeting until eleven thirty. This was on my desk. Did you leave it for me off this thing?
That's, uh-
What you told me in the email you was gonna give me?
Well, no, actually you should have in your, did I not send it? It should be in your email.
You sent me the big ones and you said there was gonna be a smaller version.
Yeah, that's actually was DNRs.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So this one's different from, got it. He just said he was, the other, he said a more general. One we could understand. So this one's DNRs.
Did you call Chris?
Yeah. He said, "No, have a flip to it till Monday or Friday." Next Friday.
Next, oh, next Friday.
A week from tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Well, this is what it is.
People try to do it, guys.
Is that it?
That's all the bills?
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was short, short notes.
And Dennis.
We're getting caught up on all the storm damage and stuff. Uh, we got some dig racks put in for some whistles to go in, but, uh, otherwise we only have the one road still closed, which is, uh, Northwest nine fifty-one in between seven hundred and eight hundred Kelli. And that would be, uh, Big Creek Township. Actually, I think where it's closed at is in Honey Creek. It's, it's right there on borderline. Um, otherwise, um... I should have all my stuff caught up and paperwork done and to, uh, subby by, or marked by, uh, first to next week at the latest. I submitted the soft match. I finally got all the paperwork together and got it submitted after you guys signed the paperwork. So I haven't heard nothing back on it. Otherwise, I don't have anything at this time. Do you have anything, Mark? Jake, do you have anything? Just whenever your schedule and Rick's schedule meets up, just give me a call and tell me and I'll, I'll be there.
When, we're not in the middle of running around all over the place.
I'm pretty well done with all that now.
Okay, okay.
I still at this time have three people employed and that's about all I can say about it right now, but, um... Jim, you got anything?
Nope.
Kelly, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
How'd that thing work out this morning? I didn't make it over there to the demonstration.
I thought it worked really well.
I think it could be handy. Jim said it seemed better than-
It's heavier, it's heavier than the road groomer, you know, where it just sits down.
Well, the, the road groomer thing, you know, it, it's only like five, six hundred pounds and, uh, just the last year and this year, what little bit we used it in, uh, um... Fields Creek.
Yeah.
I've already wore the set of blades off of it. So, I mean, the blades-
That's on the box blade, isn't it?
Well, the box blade, road dresser, road groomer, whatever you wanna call it.
I'll leave it to it.
Well, this was two, two thousand pounds, I think. And he said he thought the-
Yeah, that's what, that's what he told me whenever I talked to him about it. He said it weighs just over two thousand pounds. And it's got three sets of blades on it.
Yeah.
And it staggers it one way, then staggers it another way, then flat blades it.
Yeah.
Which, uh-
Or-
And it had the scarfire teeth on it, on the front, I think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and it, it looks better. I mean, it looks like the scarfire teeth that we had on the blades at the motorola.
It's exactly the same thing.
That same blade.
And, and it, you know, they hold, it'll hold up ten times longer than what these blades are that I'm wearing out on this other thing.
And the one that we seen today, the front didn't have the teeth on it, but they was ordering, whenever they order them, they order them with front teeth on it. Which make it last longer.
Otherwise, I'm in the process of getting that other tractor and bucket, uh, put together and everything. Whenever I get back into my barn, I'm gonna have to get ahold of, uh, the sheriff's office today and, uh, ask Mr. Kugelus when he's gonna be able to, uh, get all that evidence put back up so we can get back in that building. Because they have evidence still sitting out, so. And I, and I told him there's times we have to go in there and get our road barricades or a band or something, but I always make sure two goes in that way, nobody can touch it any second. So.
And that seems to be fine?
Yeah. So, anyway, I just need him to try to get it done sometime because, uh, Kelly's gonna be calling Purple Wave here before long, so we'll need to get that bucket out and put it on the front of that tractor.
Okay. What do you think we can get out of that tractor?
You'd get somewhere around twenty-five to thirty. Thousand.
How many horses? Well, thank you for clearing that up.
I almost bought it for that, Dennis. I don't even need a tractor.
It's, uh-
Yeah.
It's sixty-one twenty-five, so is that a hundred and twenty-five horse?
Yeah, I think, I think it's right at that. It's a hundred and some, at the time. I thought it was a hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and thirteen, hundred and fifteen, something like that.
It's a hundred and-
PTO horsepower.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's got, how many, how many spools it got on?
Do what?
How many spools on the back?
Three.
Okay. What'd they say on that one?
Uh-
Four?
Yeah. They could make free work, though.
Well, I was kicking around.
If you guys were, are interested in buying something like that there, I would be interested in a model that I can pull with one of our three-quarter ton pickups instead of the tractor because, uh, my tractors are going all summer long, moan. I mean, I'm sending them out next week and the, and you know, that'd be, unless you guys are gonna buy me another tractor, I don't know about it.
I'll tell you the problem is, I think this is gonna be hard to pull with a three-quarter ton tractor.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's got enough-
Probably a one ton, a three-four ton of work.
You're gonna pull a pretty good load. That's, that's gonna be your problem. I-
It's gonna put wear and tear on it.
Yes, it is. It's really gonna wear on it. And I guess what was, it was going through my brain.
Kelly, don't call Purple Wave on my tractor yet.
Well, did we-
I got a five fifty.
Hey.
Which is a one ton.
Did we, uh, did we, uh... What did we do to that tractor? Didn't we go through the clutch and get everything fixed up on it?
That tractor's pretty well gone through and, and stuff, but, I mean, it's an older tractor. You could run it for six months and not have an issue, or you could run it for six months and have an issue every other day. But one thing about it, it's not gonna be down in the weeds if you're gonna use it for, uh, pulling this thing. You know, it's gonna be up on the road.
That's what I said. It's gonna be an easier life for it.
Yeah.
Because what he's pulling with the, he was a sixty horse tractor and it-
This is bigger than a sixty. I think he said it was a eighty. I think he said it was an eighty.
It was an eighty? Okay, but still, yeah, it makes a big difference. Anyway, I, that was what I was thinking. If we done something, would that be smart to keep that and run it for a year? And see, I, I just feel like you hook that to, uh, a pickup, then you're gonna, you gotta have your hydraulics and you're not gonna be able to look back and see, and see what you need to do to, like-
If you guys are gonna purchase it out of the commission's, uh, budget, then I'd be more than glad to hang on to that tractor for a year and try it out for you.
It's our shop.
Fair trade to me, don't you think? Put another year of wear and tear on my tractor.
Well, we made a decision. I think we need to see what all townships are gonna be interested in.
See what they're talking about.
Before we go forward myself.
Yeah, well, I, we don't need to sell that tractor yet.
Well, I can tell you one thing, even though he didn't raise his hand the other night at the commission meeting that he had over at the Rotary Building, it's the one Mister, uh, guy that lives in, uh, Fields Creek that keeps calling me and having me come out and blade his road. You know, he's the one that wanted your phone number so he could tell you to go ahead and get that motor grader bought. So, but anyway, if you guys have nothing else for me, yes, Miss Kelly, don't sell my tractor. I'm in a hurry for Mister, uh, Kugelus to get his stuff out of my building now.
Dennis, you got a couple of new hires?
Three.
Can you send me headshots?
Uh?
Headshots?
Let me see if they're gonna be around long enough for a night.
He's-
Next week. One of them might be gone tomorrow. What's next week?
He'll be over there.
Oh. Maybe you're telling me from termination date already.
You already knew a termination, he's gonna be gone. Okay, let's see. Well, Aaron, do you have something?
Come to say hi.
Oh, well, thank you. Hi, Mark?
The DNR test results are on your desk. That's not all of them, but that's what they posted online. Our final, Rebecca, y'all got the emails on that. The... How do you say it, Nick? The version for public that's easy to read, the non-scientific version will be due by next Friday.
Yeah. Okay.
The, uh, email address for the damage reports is, um, the website is live now for the townships and everybody to use.
Have you received anything?
None. We just, we just sent out yesterday.
Okay.
Would it be okay with you if I called that the layman's?
Layman, that's the word I'm looking for.
Version?
Yes.
Okay.
He's just trying to pick the right word.
Yeah, I know.
Since it's live, I gotta be, we're, we're live streaming now, so you gotta- Um, something else besides that?
Yeah, right there. Oh, didn't I know that?
Then we got one back here.
We're in the beta testing.
Here we got back here.
There is no hiding. I can see you where you're at.
Awesome. Where else is?
One right behind you.
Everywhere in here. You can come look at my screen if you're on there. But I can't see you now because you're not in the chair. So it'll be a split screen that's live on YouTube. You can see all of us, anybody that speaks. Yeah, he's, he's sitting on the one spot, hasn't he?
Yeah, I have, I have it taped for that.
I can now.
Nobody sits over there.
I can zoom out.
Good deal.
Cool.
We're on our way.
Yep. So, anyway. Okay. Anything else they got? Let's see. Well, there's no use talking about this until we get something that we can talk about.
Yeah.
I really, I don't think all of us, any of us are kittens.
On the SEMA fund grant, you need, just to be clear, you need to get estimates from everybody on the damage, the cost to fix the damage, and then pictures. And if things have been fixed, as long as it's been fixed after the storm, with pictures, you're fine, right? Okay. Anything else they need to know about it?
So a lot of things that people, I had a talk with Dennis about yesterday, that includes the wages, your hours, and that price.
Okay.
Um, he did, Dennis and I talked about this yesterday too, the debris under the bridges, you gotta go back out and clean all that debris removal, all that, all that's included.
Cover.
All that counts for the money.
Okay. I just want to make sure what I was telling everybody was correct.
So our, our county as a whole has to reach a hundred and twenty-five thousand, estimate.
And you said that also covers flood damage inside homes?
Inside residential homes that, that goes towards that, that price also.
Okay. And the people for the residential homes, they gotta get a-
Same email address.
Okay.
Do you say a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, for our county this year, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So they go to the email address, it's not somebody from like the township or anything?
If, if, if you're a personal house, you go for that email address and it's pictures.
Okay, I gotta tell, to Ed.
Yeah, how did we put that out?
We're, we're sharing it all over KD Katie on the radio and, and our Facebook page, but Kelly has a little write-up on, it's on the front page of your commo dot com.
And you said it's on the radio?
Yeah, yeah. They're gonna start airing something on the radio here, hopefully today.
It's on, on the front page of the website. When they click the link that is the email address, it automatically populates to send them an email and it says storm damage reports. I mean, it's just as quick as hitting a button and it's right there. All they gotta do is put their stuff in there.
Okay. Any other type of damage for homeowners or is there any?
Well, like trees, any, any kind of trees down, um, like houses, cars, things like that, any kind of damage, we've got a break of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
We should be able to do that. With all the roads.
And unfortunately, that's with each storm. So, so we had a storm last weekend. So if we have a storm next month, we gotta raise a hundred and twenty-five thousand again for the next event.
We do.
But that's not hard to do.
So if we have an event tonight, that doesn't count for part of it?
So sometimes, depends on how the state, sometimes if it's, if it happens in the same week, they'll plump them together.
Okay.
But that also, like, damage is the electric company, every, those age, if they have poles down, all that goes toward, if it's in our county, it goes towards that hundred and twenty-five thousand. So if they report, we have ten poles down and it costs this much to replace and the other, that goes towards it also. As long as it happens within Henry County.
Okay. That's good.
That'll be it? Okay.
Aaron, while you're here, I would, um, Purple Wave, we was talking about it with Dennis. We was kinda waiting until we all had more than one thing. Now I'm not putting this tractor. Are you guys in a hurry for me to get that on your, you have a four, a car?
She just said she's put your tractor on Purple Wave, Dennis. My tractor's right over there.
Are you, are you, we'll hold off on that for just a little bit until we-
Yeah.
That's-
You got something else?
Yes, I do. Got a phone call the other day. And the late, uh, after we had all the spraying and everything. That bridge up there on fifteen oh one, Northwest fifteen oh one in Bogard Township. It's the last one we built. They said after that five inch rain or whatever, uh, it saddled and, uh, it did have a pretty lip on one side. But she said she tore the underneath side of her car up. So do we need to have her get ahold of our insurance company or what do you, how, what's your guys' procedure on this? Or go get the-
How big was the lip?
On one side, it was probably five, six inches.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know if it, it, it had saddled or some of the rock got washed off to the sides or, but on that one side, it was pretty good, so.
I guess just get ahold of the insurance, right?
Yeah, I would think the insurance. My question is though, have we done anything with it so we don't have somebody else?
We've already fixed it. That was the first thing we fixed Monday morning.
Okay, okay. That was the other place you would go.
Yeah, it's already been fixed.
Okay.
As soon as they make me aware of it, next morning I'll just have to fix it.
I would think it'd go to the insurance.
Next time, call me if I can get it fixed.
Wouldn't you think?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes is the answer to that?
Yes, as in, I'd think that it would go through the insurance company, that they need to bring us any kind of information that they have, that so that we can make a note that this is what's happened.
But on the other hand, it's also an act of God that we got that kind of, and they won't pay on that because, uh, we got that much rain which caused the problem.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'll just tell them to get with the insurance company and get you, I'll, Kelly, I'll give her your name and number.
Sounds great.
And you can reference it directly.
Perfect.
Yep.
Perfect.
Break them down.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
That's all I have now.
All right.
But I'm gonna stick around.
Okay, all right. Okay. I guess there's one left. Charlie?
Yeah, he signed in this.
Yep, he signed it.
Last night I went to the Davis Road Board meeting. I wrote him a letter that I wanted to see the books again. I refused. Said, "If I wanted to get it, I have to pay ten cents a seat. I only wanna look at the books." In Sunshine Law, you're allowed to look at the books.
Okay.
And Cook came up and he said, "Well, what dates do you need?" I said, "Nineteen seventy-one on." And then Ted picks up and says, "Well, we don't have those books." I know they're right there somewhere because I saw them at Coll, uh, Collins's house. She showed me the books a few years back. She showed me the books a few years back. Now where did they go?
Who's Collins?
That's the lady who used to be on the road board.
Okay, thank you.
Be back. Old eighteen.
You said in eighteen?
Old eighteen.
Old eighteen, sorry.
She was in range. So, that makes three times I've asked to look at the books and it keeps coming up saying that I need to pay for the sheets. I'm not gonna do it no more. I'm gonna go ahead and call it, turn the general, get with my lawyer. And another thing is, if those whistles would've ro- washed out, if it was down there, I'd been landlocked. You can't landlock somebody. That's against the law. You all put those in, and you should maintain them because if the mail route goes down there and the school bus comes down there, if there's any kids. We put more rock on that road in the last six months and you guys got it anyplace.
I seen it the other day, that's where I did it.
You bet. And as far as the right of way, you can't make us move fence because that has been there for sixty, hundred years.
Fair point.
So I'm asking you guys to take care of it and get that back open. If you don't, I don't care. It's, you know, I do care. What I'm saying is, I spend a lot of time, we spend a lot of money fixing that road up. It's in better shape than most of your good roads. Ted goes down through there and tries to clean out some washouts, pushes a rock in the ditch. He goes the opposite way on the road too. He should've come around on the other side.
That's good.
Where does your all the books together? How far back? I wanna look at your books, but how far did they go back?
Back to the eighteen hundreds.
Shouldn't it be on the townships?
I cannot speak for township-
I'm just asking.
Information.
So what do you think? Do you have a portion?
I really don't know how long they have to retain.
He told me they only started out to two thousand thirteen.
They gotta hold them for seven?
Seven years.
Seven years is all it is.
That's what it is.
I know that's what we did.
But I know those books somewhere.
Tornado.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about tornado.
Yeah, so I, I'm pretty sure it's seven.
Cause I saw them.
There probably is a retention on them, but I don't know what they are. But for county commission minutes, where it's a permanent record.
Yeah, that's permanent, yeah.
But it's different for every entity.
In a township, I don't know, I don't know what they say.
But it ain't been that long ago that I saw those books.
I don't know.
Just about time Ted took over.
I'm not making excuses for anybody, Charlie, but sometimes when another board takes over, they will go through and clear out records that they're not required to keep, and I only know that because of my own office, that there's a retention schedule that we have to follow, so if there's records that we don't need, we will destroy them.
Why wouldn't you need them? If you have to go back on roads.
As far as-
I can't speak for townships of what they want. Yeah, there, there should've been something recorded somewhere for that road.
You bet.
I'm not saying that that's not the case.
Cause I know it was recorded. I've got tests from maybe previous road board members that saw the paperwork.
Sure.
Was you wanting to take the minutes and keep them?
Where, from the Davis? I wanted to look at the books.
Well.
Three times, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and now last night.
Somewhere at a location that you can set them because to take them and keep them at your house, no.
I don't think you can take them.
I didn't ask to do that. I just asked him. He was already fired after the minute I walked in.
Yeah, they're, they're required to let you look at them. You can get copies of them, but they also are able, they can make you pay for them, or you can get them electronically, usually electronically, cause I know Rick did that.
Three times, I asked him to look at the books and he's flat out refused and will not let me look at the books.
Electronically, if we already have it readily available, we don't charge. If we have to research scan and then we do charge.
Whatever cost there is to, to getting them to you, they actually can charge.
That's what I asked him to do. I wanted to look at the books, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and now last night.
Do you guys have, you guys don't have a building, so the-
They use a school.
So they gotta be holding their records somewhere if they are keeping the records.
Exactly.
So that would be my-
See, I don't know where they keep them.
Yeah, see, that's the thing. That, that's why I brought up what I did when we had that meeting there. They may not have them. I'm not gonna say they do, and I'm not gonna say they don't.
Long ago, they just gonna up and throw away with something that important, should be going to the museum or something like that.
That one, that one I would disagree with y'all, cause I, I, hmm. Let's just say that everybody's gonna hate me for saying this on public, but everybody's record keeping in most of these townships lacks quite a bit. There are some that are very, very good.
Until Ted got in there and paid that.
Yeah, that, that I, that I don't know about.
And that's not right. I'm a taxpayer and a public citizen.
You have every right to look at them, every right in the world. You don't have any right to take them.
I didn't ask to do that.
But you can look at them and they are supposed to let you see it because they can get in trouble for that.
Third time's strike on him. He's got the vendetta and he's gonna keep it. So I, I think he should be voted out and get him out of there, because he's not doing the public a good as far as motor grader and being good to the public.
Well, that's up to the people in your township. If that's what you believe, then what you need to do, no, hear me out, hear me out, quit talking over me. If, if that's what you believe, then when his term comes up, what you need to do, and I'd say this for everybody, you become active in your community, you find the people that you wanna put there and you put that forward and back them and tell other people. Because otherwise, if everybody else is thinking whoever this guy is, I don't know him from Adam, if he, if everybody else thinks he's doing the right and doing the right thing, they're gonna vote him in. That's the beauty of having your township. It's local. You go to the people, say, hey, I don't like this, I want him gone, let's vote somebody else in. Cause that's the only way it's gonna change, at least for you.
Well, it could change sooner than that because if the Attorney General comes down here, just to get out Leesville and those guys be gone, we had a special deal.
Yeah, I mean, you could have, I guess you could have a special election. That, that's above my head.
They're gonna be there and audit your books and everything.
I mean, they'll get, what, what'll, what'll happen is they'll get their hands slapped. That's probably what's gonna happen if, if, I'm just telling you, if you get the Attorney General about-
You too.
Oh, sure, sure.
You bet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there, there, there's legal aspects and avenues that you can go down. You just-
It's just like, one thing I wanna say to you that, you know, you're supposed to get a permit to put a se- a septic tank in, right? Well, I checked on Ted, he put one in and he didn't even get a permit. I'll check with the health department. What happened to that?
I feel like you're asking us a lot of questions we don't know the answers to. I mean, that's, that's not our jurisdiction.
That's the type of guy he is. He's bullheaded, he's gonna do what he wants to do regardless of who he hurts or cares about.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, as far as you trying to track that down, my suggestion, I mean, if, if, I get it, if you're not getting a response, then you're going to probably involve an attorney or Attorney General or whatever. You just wanna be aware. Hear me, one more out. Hear me, hear me a little bit further. You just wanna be aware, you're going to spend a fair amount of money to fight it, no matter what it is, and you will not get attorney fees. I'm gonna tell you straight up, you're not gonna get your, you will pay for it, and he will pay, whoever it is you're suing will pay for that. You're not gonna get attorney fees. It's very, 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 did I say very? Rare that you will get attorney fees picked up on issues like that. It doesn't happen.
That's the whole thing is, it, it, doing everything wrong. That's the issue with the funds out there, the way he's doing things. Running motor grader, you go in and pull it out, go the opposite direction, put it in the ditch, all that rock's gone now. Fill up the ditch, you're gonna have to pull it again. That's stupid.
Yeah, but how he's doing stuff.
I just wanted to let-
I don't have any complaints from anybody over there except for Charlie.
Third time that I've asked to look at these books and he refused to do it, and I'm gonna do something different that time.
Have you done that at the meeting?
What?
At the meetings, is that where you ask him?
Yes, I, I presented him the papers. They, they can record like you all are doing.
Okay.
And they recorded it. And his attitude, several people said, Ted?
Is it in the meet, then they record their, that's good, that's good. I was gonna say, cause it should be in the meeting minutes that you requested this. Case closed. If you take it through an attorney, if they got it in their minutes, then-
It's just like I brought these papers up and gave them to the county commissioners whenever I asked for the minutes before the books. And that's when we're done, wouldn't do it. That's all I got to say. Other than asking you, there should be enough rock on that road to go back. Unless you're scared of it. Because we, we talked about this, opening that road back up. If he didn't make it on the road board, we could probably get it opened up.
I thought if the township would allow it.
Why wouldn't it allow? They got, we got better road than you got on some of the main roads.
Doesn't make the specs on the sheet though, Charlie. That's, the township's gonna tell me. But-
It was on the sheet. Cause I've got two or three places where it showed it on there, about the, all the way down there to my house. It's only been changed since Ted come in office. And he maintained it to a few years after he was on the road board.
We've already decided on this, Charlie.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, at some point, we're gonna have to go into closing.
Yeah, I'll cut up the room.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go to close session.
Is that okay?
Okay.